Thank you.
This is the regular monthly meeting of the Dyson Development and Industrial Commission. I have six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and we can start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the new business, I just wanted to update at our last meeting, we had made a request for the next fiscal year, so I did submit that on time through the town accountant. So we did level fund our request at a thousand dollars, so it has been submitted. The next thing I was just discuss updates on the business spotlight interviews, I just had not followed up, I don't know if you've heard anything, Paul?
Yes, I spoke with Stephanie this morning, and we are going to be, I have to speak with Laura Maderos, we're targeting a hopeful date of Saturday the 16th, day before St. Patrick's Day. So we'll confirm cable availability, and then I can send you an email, you can follow up, and then we could just briefly review, I had a copy of the questions that I brought with me that we discussed at the prior meeting. If you'd like, maybe we can sit and review those, see if there's anything else.
Okay, yes.
And Stephanie also indicated that she might be interested in asking Bill Moore if he'd also like to attend and just be present, just in case, because he sometimes delves into the nitty gritty on a couple of details that might not necessarily come up in her day to day. So she said that he might be a good addition too, so I'm gonna ask him if he'd be interested in.
Okay.
So it'll be just Bill?
Right, and Stephanie.
And Stephanie, right.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Yeah, exactly. And no, I think Stephanie would be a really great resource because she's there day to day, and she requested if Bill would be able to, she'd feel a little better knowing that she can kind of bounce things off of him if there's anything that she'd rather he elaborate on.
Okay, alright, that sounds good.
When is the date on that?
We're targeting March 16th, and now that the cable room is operational, I think, yeah, I'm excited, we're hopefully gonna be doing our inaugural, inaugural recording over at the cable studio. And they've got a green screen and all kinds of really cool stuff now, so we might be, we might be live from Paris with the.
While we're on that, I don't know, you said you had a copy of the questions, I have two.
I might have left it in my car, actually, I apologize. Oh, here they are, yep, I do have one.
You just wanna read them out?
Yeah, absolutely. So question one has an A part and a B part, so what forms, if any, are businesses required to file annually with the assessor's office? And we're going to be told about the form of list, so what is the Massachusetts Form of List, and is there a penalty for not filing any required forms? Can you define personal property as it applies to the assessor's office, and can you provide some examples of items subject to tax? How is personal property assessed excluding vehicles subject to excise taxes? Do you, how do the assessors verify that an owner has reported its taxable personal property accurately and completely? What items, if any, are exempt? If the business has inventory or property that is frequently moved from place to place between towns, to which town is the tax paid? If the personal property is leased, who is responsible for any taxes? Are vehicles potentially subject to both personal property and excise taxes? Are businesses run from a primary residence subject to commercial property taxes? If so, how is the amount determined? For businesses run from a primary residence, is there a minimum personal property valuation before being required to file forms or pay a tax? For example, the total business assets are comprised of a phone and computer only. If a business certificate is issued or renewed by the town clerk's office, does the business need to also notify the assessor's office? If the business is a corporation or LLC and on file with the State Department of Corporations, does it need to also notify the assessor's office? Is the abatement request process the same for commercial property tax and personal property tax as it is for residential property and excise taxes? Which, those are nine full questions, and then with the A and B part, that gives us 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, which that's right about on the money, our average interviews have been anywhere between like eight and 15 questions.
Now, how long is the session, half hour, hour?
We schedule usually about a half an hour, I'd say that 10 minutes or so of that is kind of like mic check, getting warmed up. I make Laura work for it a little bit because I tend to mess up a couple of times in the beginning, we have to cut and reshoot. And then, so usually the actual interviews themselves are anywhere between 10, and I think the longest was almost, well, almost 20 minutes, I think, Chris Silva, yeah. Yeah, that was the longest that we did, but there was, there was just so much, there was such a variety of things that the chamber does, that that one went a little long, but usually anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes.
Anybody have any comments or feedback or suggestions or?
Good questions.
Yeah. And it's just kind of open, so, because it's casual.
Yeah, exactly, it's conversational, something up and down. Exactly, we can follow a thread a little bit if one emerges, that's fine, we're gonna do it.
The next one is discuss where you act on the 2024 plans, and John had offered to kind of condemn the economic development plans implementation, just like a simple exercise. That we could go through rank, see what things we want to work on, whose things actually apply to us, because not everything may apply to us. And just a reminder that the responsible party that's listed here, that's Surfit's idea of who's responsible party, not our idea, so it may or may not be correct. But if we want to go through these and talk about the ones that we think apply to us, and that we may want to have something to do with this year, or just go through them one by one.
Sounds good.
Okay. First one is zoning amendments. So item one, complete a thorough review and comprehensive update of the zoning pilot, press formatting, land use, dimensional regulations, clocking requirements, and supplemental development regulations. Just as an update, the town did submit a grant request for a consultant to help the planning board to do a thorough, I think you said, Joe, the last time it was done was like seven years ago, six years ago? The planning board went through and really looked at all the zoning stuff and see what they want, might want to update. Joe?
Joe.
No, that didn't happen, no?
I didn't, I didn't know anything about it.
Okay, I thought, I thought, since you had gone on, it didn't happen at least one time, but, no, okay. The award for that grant, though, doesn't happen until like December, so at best, if, this would be like a 2025 thing for the planning board, but it really is planning board specific. Doesn't mean like we can't give input and have opinions and offer them up, but it's really a planning board effort, so.
Now, has the, you already received the grant, or you have to?
No, it's already been applied, we won't find out though until like December.
Oh.
So that's why I say at best it'd be a 2025 thing, so, John?
Good question, Dan, is the planning board had an opportunity to?
Your volume's a little bit low, I don't know if that's on our end or your end.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking.
Okay, all right, no, it's okay, that's better.
Oh, okay, has the planning board had an opportunity to review the economic development plan that was approved by the selectmen?
It was presented to them at the last meeting, Surfit presented it to them, so they have had an opportunity to review, it is a very high level presentation, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I think we're all agree, the first one's really planning board specific. Number two, create a user-friendly development and permitting guide to encourage new business, home-based business and existing business growth. I think we actually come up with this one way back when, because our Business Town of Dyson Business Guide compared to like this, which is an example of Surfit offering, this is Middleton's, Middleton, Middleton, Middleton Rose Permitting Guide. Straight graphic, laid out logically, easy to follow.
Nice.
So, you know, doing something like this for the town, I think, you know, would just help.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if, you know, as a committee, we wanted to take that on, obviously, this touches a lot of departments, that the content is not something we're gonna be changing in terms of the actual guidelines themselves, it's more the presentation and style, does this make it kind of seamless and flow better and?
Absolutely, I do have an idea that might help facilitate that, maybe we could request to the town administrator's office if a representative from DDIC could be permitted to observe the permitting and compliance team meetings? There's a packed team meeting between the bodies from like zoning, building, conservation, really the permit issuing bodies. It could be nice if we had a representative from DDIC who's just allowed to kind of observe, because I have a feeling that will kind of absorb some of the pain points by osmosis in the way that our permitting processes link up. And we might be able to use what we learn there to kind of help us assemble a permitting guide in a way that's nice and, ideally, we want it to feel as much like a conveyor belt as we can, right? For people that want to do it the right way, we want to have, you know, clear code group guidelines, that might be a good way for us to kind of see some of the issues and see if we get some recommendations that might kind of tie these silos together.
Okay, yeah, I can ask, obviously, those are my meetings.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy to attend if, yeah, yeah, absolutely, they usually do them in the morning, and I believe they usually do them on Tuesdays, it's actually a really good morning for me.
Okay, all right, so I'll reach out to him and ask that.
I have that as a high priority.
High priority, you had this personal issue with?
No, no, I just like, I rate, I ranked my first ones.
All right, okay.
Did some homework for you.
Okay. So actually, do we want to do that at the end, or as people are going through, do we just want to like take a vote, like what is a high priority item? And it may be that we, at the end, we just want to do everything that we mark as actionable, but is this, so Laura said this is a high priority item for her.
I agree.
You do, yeah. Seems like everybody's agreed on that, okay, so let's just mark that. The next one is clarify mixed-use zoning regulations. Again, this is more planning board, and I'm not so, I don't think this is really a big deal anyway, I get it, there's a little bit of confusion about businesses in mixed use, there's rules about like house upstairs, business downstairs.
Right, by right for a special permit.
Vice versa, you know, that kind of stuff, but I, you know. But it's, I don't think it's really for us anyway, it's more the planning board if they really feel.
This should, this should be 100% for the planning board.
Yep, I agree.
I agree, okay. Next one is support the continued operation and growth of home-based businesses. This kind of speaks back to what we've been trying to revise and present to the planning board about revisions to home-based businesses, and I know Barbara had asked for extra time to review it, she's not here this evening, but I don't know if other people have think it's good to go that we could tee it up and present it to the planning board to get their feedback, or do they have questions about it, or want to look at it more?
I looked at it the last meeting and it seemed good to me.
And I know Paul, you and John, you had said you're okay with it, did you have questions about it or?
I have, I don't know what you want to call it, but I can tell you this, home-based business is all over the place, I mean, it could be a base business of construction, which I've been running that the last 36 years that I've been in town, well, no, the last 10 years I haven't been, prior to that I did, but there's a lot of different businesses. There's people that just strictly use their computer out of their home, there's people that run a landscaping business, others just do a little bit of mechanical work, there's all of these things in town, and how you know, how is this gonna work to?
I agree, and we're kind of like, as opposed to, with a couple of exceptions, maybe saying you can or cannot do this specific thing, it's more like do you generate noise, pollution, traffic, are you doing something that's gonna disturb the neighborhood, and if the answer to those are none of the above, then why should we stop you? I mean, it's kind of the gist of it, right?
I don't know which way to go, you know, it's, it's a tricky one, I mean, home-based business is all over the place, and we have no way of figuring out how to go about getting.
Well, that's why we're gonna punt it to the planning board. Good ideas.
Isn't this really about by, the bylaws, right, that govern home-based business? And, and so, Joe, from, from my perspective, right, as long as a resident wants to have a business, a home-based business, and they're within the, you know, guidelines of the bylaws, then they should be able to do that, right? Some of the bylaws say you can't have this type of business, right, when you mentioned like landscaping and mechanics, they have to be within certain rules, right? So I think as long as they're within the rules, which is what Dan I think is proposing to the, to the zoning board, then that's, that's fine, right, planning board, sorry. What do you think?
Well, I'll, I'll talk to Carrie and say, you know, like, whenever there's a slow meeting, like April, I mean, this wouldn't, even if the planning board said, yeah, we agree, let's bring it forward to the next meeting, you'd be looking at like a special meeting, not the next town meeting, because.
I, I agree that we should do something about it, but I don't, I just, I can't get an idea of how to go about it, because 90% of the people are not gonna want to come forward. I'm just home, I, I don't, I don't want to pay taxes, that's, that's really what the issue is.
That's not the assessor's issue, not really ours, but, you know, you have a home business, you need to at least tell the assessors. Now, there may be zero taxable responsibility as a result of it, if your, your business is your office with your computer and your phone, and that's about it.
There's no way to find out or to determine whether it's an actual business coming out of there, but it's very easily done, you know, it's.
You have an appointment, I'm sorry, did you want to say something, or, no, okay, all right, so, it sounds like at least as a proposal, this is the best guess for a proposal, so I'll talk to Carrie and see about putting it on the agenda for the planning board to start talking about.
I still say that we have to have that meeting that we talked about a long time ago, about having the assessor's office.
Well, that's the one that's gonna happen in March.
Yes, yeah, we're gonna do that one as like the TV interview style, so that people can ask questions, and one of the things that maybe we could consider doing in next week, maybe I could also speak with the town administrator to see how you feel about soliciting questions from the business community through the town Facebook, like if there's any specific questions, if you have a local business and you wanted to ask questions about personal property tax, or of businesses or assess.
It's not going to be a public meeting, right?
Right, exactly, is.
Okay. Personally, I think it would be.
We just couldn't get together the two boards.
Right, it could be something that we look at as a result, we could think about a follow-up based on the interest that it gets on the YouTube video, because I know it's an awful lot of logistics to convene the dual meeting of the boards, and it would be a shame if we turn out like this. For that, for that meeting.
Which is 90% of the meetings in town are like this.
Where if the, if the YouTube video managed to get, you know, 100 or a couple of hundred views of, you know, if even half of those people had questions, that could end up giving us some really fertile ground for a follow-up meeting from there that might get more eye in and be better attended, and kind of justify the logistics of it.
So I was thinking, how is this interview going to end, like I feel like it should have some type of follow-up, because I think people will have questions after they view it.
Yeah, absolutely, and we could.
What do they, what do they do if they do have questions, type of thing?
Maybe something we could do would be based on the, based on the, say, the views in the first month or something, or we could post it, and then 30 days later, maybe ask the town administrator's office to share it on the Facebook and say if there's anything in this meeting that you didn't see answered, do you have any additional questions, maybe just start a dialogue? That could be a catalyst for a joint meeting in the future.
I, I agree, Tom.
Or maybe a special event, for all the home-based businesses, you can come, talk about your business and ask questions, because we got a thousand dollars to spend. So how, how are we going to support continued operation and growth beyond?
For the home-based business?
Yes.
Well, I mean, as far as the bylaws go, and the planning board, it's really setting the framework, I mean, it's always a thing about the planning board is it's a top-down approach to management of businesses which are by nature bottom-up, in terms of how they grow and where they grow into. So there's always a mismatch there, you know, things don't come out the way you want, because one's opposing rules and the other's doing what it thinks is best, and I mean, but ideally, like you said, if there's a big interest, then we need the dialogue back from those people, you know, they have to kind of step up and say, here's what we need, here's what you're not seeing, here's what needs to change to really help us forward.
Yep, and Paul, you know, on, on your videos, which you do an awesome job with, and I watch every one of them.
Thank you.
More than once. Is that you definitely have down at the bottom, if you have questions or anything, please email DDIC@dyton.gov and that sort of thing, so maybe at the end of that segment, you could say, anybody watching that has a small business and has other questions, please email us, or let us know where your, you know, your challenges and questions.
Absolutely, I love that, yeah, absolutely, that's a great, that's a great sign off, I like that a lot.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Next item is provide clear expectations for rural landscape design to enhance, maintain Dyson's rural character particularly along industrial and subdivision developments. That is clearly a planning board issue, I think we mentioned it the last time, right now, our planning board rules are really around providing buffers, you know, just screening, it's not really landscaping. Well, I mean, there's some landscaping there, but really it's around like privacy issues, and so you're not seeing what's going on next door, and, you know, and you think it's affects the view from your house, that kind of thing. But there are towns that have really taken it to the max, which is to try to present the town in a certain light as you're driving down the street. I think that's not really where we're headed, but even though I think this is a planning board issue, I don't think it's out of line for us to just take on doing some research.
Sure.
What are other towns doing, what does it look like, how far did they take it, what success did they do, and all that kind of stuff, so maybe we can just take that on as an item, so, and we can figure out later, like, who's gonna work on it. Again, this would be teeing up with 2025 discussion by the planning board, so it's not like, you know, there's any urgency to it, but. Kind of people in agreement with that, okay, yeah.
Yeah.
The next one is integrate artisan zoning into the bylaws to provide space for small-scale manufacturers that provide little or no vibration, noise, fumes, other nuisances, meaning they can fit into a wide variety of industrial, commercial, and even residential districts. So in terms of the last part, even residential districts, we did kind of, or at least if you look at it, we stuck artisan zoning into the suggestion about home-based businesses, like what can constitute a home-based business? And even introduced the term artisan zoning, so at least we've got our foot in the door there. In terms of expanding into like ability to go into an industrial building or that kind of thing, that's planning board and zoning and that sort of thing, but I think we're at least starting it by introducing it with home-based businesses in terms of what can constitute artisan, and hitting it in the vocabulary of, you know, the planning boards.
Yeah, absolutely, as we find other towns that have implemented it successfully, we can just kind of share that as just some background, secondary information for them when they review it.
Next one, adopt a riverfront overlay to support riverfront development, that's kind of clearly planning board. We don't actually even have a riverfront overlay as a concept right now in our, in our zoning.
That I know of, but I don't think we have any overlay.
Right.
So I think the only overlay is this corner right over here, for those that accepted it.
Oh, right.
Okay, so basically, I accepted it, and the people on the opposite side did not, and they're the ones that are running business out of it. So it's just another. They don't want the overlay, but they do have a business there.
Right. Now, who's the enforcement of that, who has the?
I have no idea. I just had it out with a guy the other day, he's been using my property to park their trucks and stuff, and said, listen, you can't do that. This is the second time, he goes, I pay my taxes.
It's your land!
So I, I just let it go, but, you know, it's, the post office came to me and said, listen, it's, if I have trucks coming out of here, those trucks are parked over there, and every time they park there, I get a call, so I went to see them. It blew up on me, so. It, it's just one of those things, but anyways, it's another story.
The next section is under rural economy, the first item is enhance access and connections to wild scenic town in the Three Mile Rivers. I certainly support that, I don't know if that's a DDIC issue, yeah. Next one, prioritize connections and investment of the Ton River Trail, again, I think the Dyson Trails is doing a great job of that, and I support them, but not really a DDIC thing. The next one is enhance agricultural economy through the development of agricultural or incubator spaces.
What's incubator space?
That's like a space, like a commercial kitchen type thing?
Oh, okay, thank you.
I told somebody about this, and they said, hell, I've never seen you and Barbara swing animated as you were at the last meeting, or at the meeting that this got brought up, he was like, do you know how hard it is to get those kind of facilities? Oh my gosh, those are so expensive, everybody wants those, John was saying like how most of his core clients are people who want to get into baking, so huge demand for that kind of thing. The problem would be, and this is more a zoning issue too, like where and how would create such, such a thing in, in Dyson if it were possible? There probably some parcels in plan, like if they wanted to do it, places like, you know, Interplast, and, you know, have the space for that kind of stuff.
You know what might kind of tangentially fall into this that could be interesting to explore? Is I was thinking about, I'm really fond of walking around in the Council Oak Development, down the little dirt road by the pumpkin patch, and that pumpkin patch that Arujos Farms is owned by the Dyson Conservation Commission, they actually have a lease to farm there. Yeah, and, yeah, the Concom actually owns that, that parcel of land, right across from the Council Oak, and I wonder if it could be worth exploring if there were other parcels that were owned by the town or owned by conservation that might be worth exploring agricultural leases to local farmers, that'd be a way to raise revenue for the town, because if it's town-owned, it's not generating any revenue, and it would essentially, you know, the rate that the town would be able to charge by virtue of the fact that we really don't have any expenses on it, would be a way to enhance revenue, but also kind of subsidize agricultural economy too.
Oh, isn't that, sorry, isn't that going to create town getting involved in the real estate business?
It already is, though.
And?
In that, is that example that I used, the pumpkin field by, by Arujos is, you know, it's actively being cultivated for, I think, squash, I think, in the summer, and pumpkin.
And that's down charged for that?
Yes, yep, they, they, yeah, there's a lease signed with, with the Arujos, and the town actually owns the land, and.
I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah, so I wonder if that's an option that we could explore, which could be a way to kind of foster agriculture and get revenue at the same time, I think that could be something that might be worth looking into under that provision of enhancing agricultural economy.
I'm sure it varies, you know, depending on the details of what you're doing, but is there an average like acreage that, below that, it's really, it's, you're kind of talking to smaller parcel to, to worry about that? You're talking to?
I know a farmer I can ask.
This farming land is like, there are so many people that want to get into farming, I don't know why, but they do, and so I think that's an excellent idea.
I, I agree, I agree 100%, that's, that's something that, the town owns a lot of land, and there would be farmers that would probably be willing to come in and clear that land. Turn it into something useful.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Does the Land Use Committee know of all those parcels that, and, you know?
The life.
Not, you know, potentially, you at least. Not not potentially, you at least know what.
Oh, yeah, we have a composite list.
Don't worry, he'll be eating vegetables.
Yeah, absolutely.
So what would be the best way to go through that composite list and say like, you know, this is actually farmable? Because I know like not every spot that's. Able to be farmed is necessarily good farming and you and Barbara made that point before, which is. Just because you have dirt doesn't mean you can farm it, you know?
You need soil.
You need.
What could be a good option would be um. Is I could get a list of all the parcels and then start a project where. I could work with the assessors to determine the map and lot to see which, you know, which ones are landlocked, which ones are, you know, if we. If we were to kind of develop a process of elimination, maybe that could be something we could. Uh, to discuss at our next meeting, because I I do have some ignorance in terms of, you know, front edge zoning. Areas where it could go. We could begin a process of elimination by determining what parcels aren't landlocked, what parcels aren't wetlands. And then kind of winnow it down to um, you know, examable parcels. And then um, we could go from there.
Right.
That's just, these are jumping off points. This is one of those, like, kind of came up with the idea while I was talking kind of situation.
I like this a lot. I really, really do. This could open up, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry.
I I'm just saying, I think this could open up a whole new thing.
Yeah.
For farmers and and things like that.
Excellent idea. Once you determine the areas that could be used. Creating a process of how market it.
Absolutely.
You know, because we don't have anyone who could reach out to the farmers. At least we haven't designated anyone.
I guess, okay, I know some people.
I actually, at this point, back like two years, C math came to Bristol Addley. And it was, the whole seminar was. How you want to start farming? How do you get started? And there were people there that just showed up who was like, I want to be a farmer and or. I I am a farmer. I just started. I've only been doing it for a year. I have questions. I have issues, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, that's kind of exactly what C math. Does among other things, right? Kind of put those people into.
They try, yeah.
Opportunities, yeah. The board of directors.
Oh, oh, thank you.
Also, what about AgCom? Why they? How can they? I would think they would want to be involved with us.
Do they meet?
Yeah.
Occasionally, they're still having trouble getting quarrels for their meetings.
I think you're right. In most towns, that is exactly where it would fall, but just think that they haven't been super active in terms of their ability to. Eat regularly, so.
Yeah. That's why if you want to step up, that would be.
We're gonna start that.
I'm gonna put the alert on my. Right now, said I remember to do that one.
Get something done.
Yeah.
I really like this a lot. I really, really do.
I just give you a stat update. Go ahead, Joe, when you're done, just let me know.
I uh, I have a friend that's raising cattle and. Different animals in a small area. He joked, you know, if anybody, I says, yeah, I have a lot of land. You you can come and farm over there. He goes. You sure I can do that? Because I said, I'll even fence it all in for you. Because I would love to see it all cleared up. And he goes, it won't take long. It'll be all cleared up.
Okay, with that land in chapter, and there you go.
Yeah, well, it is. I'm halfway there. No, but he he wants to buy. But if it was something that he could lease. For a period of time, I think he would be willing to do that. I really do, and I I know the town owns quite a bit of land and some of it.
Get it back on the tax rolls, get some revenue and support the farm economy.
I have a thought, but John's first.
Thank you. Um, so um, just an update, I think in our last meeting, I told you that I was going to follow up with the president of. Um, an organization called Gotham Greens. They are a a Greens agriculture business that's nationwide. Um, so I did get an introduction to him. Um, I'm waiting to get a meeting with him, so I haven't yet gotten a meeting with him. But I've had the introduction and basically the meeting is going to be to talk to him about. What, you know, what is their site location parameters? Would they be interested in doing anything in Dayton? Um, and that sort of thing. So I think that that might be good. I'm not sure if folks. Uh, actually looked at Gotham Greens from our last meeting, but it's a very large organization that does. Uh, they grow um greens, um, and herbs on rooftops. And um. So I thought, you know, we've got some industrial businesses here that might have some available rooftop, you know, agriculture might fit in well with the town, so. Um, I'm pursuing that. I also did have a very brief meeting with um Darlene Arujow and asked her if. That would be something that Arujos might be interested in. And she said, uh, she wasn't really interested in hydroponics, which is, I think what this is, but. Um, I did pursue that anyway.
I probably have a million reasons why it wouldn't work. I even threw the high school out there. It's the place you could grow greens on top of, so. Nice big building, class, down road, so.
Yeah.
And again, they'd lease it from the school department, so take it revenue.
Yeah.
It's educational.
Yeah. The next one is under rural economy, zoning, great design guidelines, search water. To promote building, fishing, recreation, and related services. Again, this is the kind of thing that falls to planning, but it doesn't mean that. It's not the kind of thing that we can't spend time if you're doing research on for success or stories. What makes it successful? What doesn't? What's worked elsewhere? Just to kind of feed into when and if the planning board gets around to this next year. What are the things that, you know, what are the drivers that have actually? Research effort this year than anything else?
Has anyone reached out to Interplast in regards to the water? On their building?
Honestly, um. John and I actually did meet with Mike just to get his feedback on this, so. But the original economic development, just to see like what he saw as. And so as a result of that, I reached out to um. Jim Agiar and asked him if he had a contact for Interplast, because. We didn't really have a handy person for them. I'd actually been in the building. I talked to the manager there, but they're just. He's the manager of that factory. You know, he doesn't care about the rest of the property. He's running the factory in the back and. Um, that's all he really knew about, so um. But I'm hoping that Jim can give me a contact for their company. I did some digging on them. I did not realize how enormous Interplast is as a corporation. They're like a multi-billion dollar company with. National, international presence.
Really?
Yeah, they're they're enormous. Um, they actually just built like a twenty eight million dollar facility up in. Some small town in New Hampshire.
Wow.
Where they're trying to turn. Plastic recycling into diesel.
Into what diesel? Really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
So their whole business is based on plastics, you know, but that's one of their goals is that. You break it, you'll break it down chemically, you can turn it into diesel. Now. They are still in a trial period. They haven't gotten it to the point where it's economically feasible. It's technically feasible, but they haven't scaled it up to where it's a moneymaker to do it, but the the facility's been built and it's up and running. That's what I think. They are big, deep pockets company, you know, so it'd be nice to just get an idea from them. What are they thinking about that site? Because they use a small fraction of the total site. They own all of that, but they just have this small factory in the back and what are their plans, if any? Have they thought about, you know?
It's amazing how you you look at people and you don't have a clue. Of who they are or anything like that, you know.
Do you know your neighbors very well?
Do, right, yes, I do. But.
That live in this town.
I'm sorry?
That even there are people in this town. I dealt with that with the the bridge over uh on Brick Street. There are people in this town. Who have huge connections, one individual on a world stage. Have great resources. It would be a big plus. So. We could reach out to them.
Going to answer your question on. I don't think it's that, but they're going to be like a. What do they, what do they want to do? The next item is under infrastructure. Um, so we're talking about water, sewer, um, drinking water. All of these. A collection of committees, you know, the Board of Selectment in particular, the Water District Sewer Department. Highway Superintendent. I mean, doesn't mean they're not. Good goals, most of them, you know, heavy lifts. Um, I don't think that it's something we would assist in particularly or have anything to contribute as this time.
Yeah, I can.
Okay. The next item, brownfield remediation, kind of follows the same thing. Um. You know, um. Seneca has, I guess, I'm not sure what the impetus was with them, but they have started. Be the process of cleanup. Um, my understanding is. It's like a five, ten year process, you know, before they get any anywhere and who knows what the end result of that, you know, cleanup would be in terms of. How available the land would be or what it could be used for afterwards, but um. It has started, which is better than ten years ago, which is when they were just sitting on it, right?
Right.
So um, but again, it's not. I think right now it's awaiting, you know, as they pursue that and move it forward. I don't know that we have, we're in a position to like. Maybe the town is as a whole, but not us to push them faster or. Your quest, so I think we're just.
One thing we could look into is I follow on uh on LinkedIn, I follow the Director for the Taunton Office of Economic Development. And um, they do a great job utilizing lots of different state grants, like underutilized property and lots of different programs. And I saw, I don't remember the specifics, but I believe I saw a recent post where the city of Taunton just used uh uh forty three D. To um, I I forget if it was remediation grant or something. Um, it might be worth. Seeing if I can learn more about that. Maybe I can reach out to their Office of Economic Development and just learn more about the program and what they applied for. To see if there might be any traction that we could get, because. If there was any grant funding available, maybe it would expedite the cleanup a little bit.
Yeah, no, I think that any information would be helpful. My understanding is that Seneca. Oh, most companies that are, you know, brownfields that they have to clean up are. Don't really like jump on it. Seneca as a company drags its feet way more than most.
Right.
And just glacially slow progress. So it doesn't mean that there aren't opportunities to get up to move faster. I think it's them that don't want to.
Right.
Move faster. They have no impetus to move faster. Even if there were opportunities, but doesn't mean we can't learn about those opportunities. John?
Yep, Dan, I know Jay. Um, so Paul, I know Jay. Um, I'd be, I'd be happy to um. Either sit in on that meeting or buy you guys coffee, but however I can help, help with that, I can definitely help with. You know, getting you in um, you know. A meeting with Jay or what whatever you would like. If you'd like me to help or participate. I'll, I'm more than happy to help.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, I will. I will follow up with you on that because they they share a lot. He shares a lot of content.
Just tell them how you like your coffee.
Yeah.
Irish. Yes. In regards to the brownfield remediation. In the few meetings that I've been involved, reading the audience. Officials involved. Many people are skeptical. Uneducated. And afraid of the can of worms that we may be opening. And with that being said, there is a real need for an education piece to this, an education piece. To town officials and the public as to the positives of doing this. You know, whenever you go to. Clean up a brownfield site. You're always going to get people who are concerned about, one, how thoroughly it is cleaned up. Two, what can of worms? Are you going to open? So, and I and I think in this day and age. It's more unfounded fears, especially with a lot of the people. That have been around during the old days of ICI. When the river was blue and purple and pink. And the story is about stuff being buried behind three fences in some places. You know, people are saying, if it's buried behind three fences, must be bad. But just to reassure people that the science is proven and it can be successfully done. Because there's a lot of land out there.
That might be, I I'm sure they dealt with the same thing in Taunton as far as the first step. You know, in terms of dealing with the public, I mean, so the person you were talking to, Jay. May have some information about how they approached it too, if you're here, you're asking that question too, and.
Yeah, that'd be great.
How in its infancy did they start talking to the public about? Well. How do you mitigate the dangers? What are the dangers? You know, what is the, what's real? Legend.
Sounds great.
Okay, good. Just kind of on a separate note, whatever happens or if anything's happening to the idea of the. Getting sober, like, is that still a viable project or is that not really going to happen or it's still in the works?
It's been put on the back burner. One of the things that was supposed to happen and didn't happen was um. A meeting inspection by EPA. What's doable, what's not. And. It really has been an issue of lack of manpower, man hours, I should say. You know, there's only so many hours in the day that guys like Tom Ferry and Jim Aggyak can work. And saw and water people, Nancy Coolats, so. Um, that's been the real issue, you know, I mean, we've got a lot going on in this town. Especially Jimmy and Tommy. Tommy's got Main Street, Jimmy's got a library. So that's, that's what it's been.
Okay.
Not that it, you know, not that it isn't viable, doable. It is, but there's a lot of planning and work to be done to make it happen.
Um, the last section is on character and place, place making. So the first one is. Develop coordinated wayfinding and signage model for the townwide. Well, basically it's just branding the town, you know, for marketing purposes. Not, I mean, informational as well, but it's also a branding opportunity to say like. This is Dayton, these are the parks and the waterways and river access and. You know, sections of town, that sort of thing. Um, and I've always thought that this is kind of like really where um. Titan Trails and Parks and Rec, Historical Commission. Um, would want to come together and make some proposals for what they can do. I think it's a, it's a good idea and it does, you know, kind of stamp the town in terms of like putting it on the map. Again, as I'm on the business side, it's more marketing, you know. I have been talking to them about that and um, it is uh, could be done using CPC funds. You know, a lot of towns have done it. Um, so. You know, a lot of towns have done it, um, so um. Does that think about like, what's the best way to do it, you know, um, who would be involved? Would you do, what kind of signage would it be, would it be like? The banners on the poles, or would it be something else, or, you know, so. So I I kind of continued with like Parks and Rec and Titan Trails and. To Pat Gales from the historical commission at one point. But I think it's, we could still just keep pursuing it, though I think they would be the big drivers of it, as opposed to us, but. Um, next one is expand programming and resources to strengthen the economic vitality through small business technical support. Especially among low-based businesses. It's honestly where we could research this, get an idea of like what's. It's kind of a cost issue too, when you say technical support, what exactly are you offering, small businesses, um. I don't know, John, do you have any like ideas about? Examples of technical support that towns offer businesses? Um, you know, and what's feasible, what's not feasible, what's, what's a cost item, what's not a cost item, back to the town? You know, it might be a cost item, but it's an investment in businesses, but. You know, I know towns do make services available to businesses to assist them. Um, just kind of looking for some examples of what. What other towns might have done, if you know.
Not right off the top of my head, I'm drawing a blank here on that, that one, Dan, um.
I mean, it's some things like TIF arrangements, tax incentive financing would be an example of that, that's been around a long time. Um, um, you know, others I think are truly more technical in nature. I'm floundering here a bit, but I I again, I think it's the kind of thing that's worthy of research. You know, and we could see what might be, what works, what doesn't work, um, what's. What's a cost item to the town, what's kind of, does it cost anything, but it just, oh, it, you know, helps direct people. Um, who are looking for assistance, so.
Yeah. Okay, so would you like me to take that on as a action item, you want me to?
If you would, sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Knowing more about this stuff.
Yeah, I think hopefully the chamber does have some resources that you can tap into, John.
Oh, look.
Okay.
Yep.
The last one, which you talked about before, which is promote agritourism and farm deforestation, um. You know, we we basically said there's nothing that's stopping agritourism right now, there isn't happening, is there? But there's nothing, no oil laws, nothing. Nothing is preventing it, um, you know, how would you really kickstart it, or help people? You know, think it's financially viable for them to do this, you know, I mentioned. There's apparently a thriving place in Berkeley, so thriving that. The town's all over the guy's case for traffic, because he gets so many visitors to his farm, um. So, I mean, it it works, it's just dependent upon what somebody's business model is, what they wanna offer. You know, all that kind of stuff, so. You know, I I think, you know, she does seem a person, you know, Serpeth does mention Bristol Aggie here, so. You know, maybe I can reach out to Bristol Aggie, or you're on the board too, you know. See how easy it is to redirect.
Can be involved, though. I can see, definitely see Matt, I mean.
Okay.
This.
And maybe if there's just a contact you can point me to, that I can talk to, and, or you could, then that'd be great too, but, um, just like. People who wanna get into this, or make it more attractive for them to get in. What are, what are. Is it really like? Corn mazes or any pony rides, and, or is it more than that?
There's more than that, you know, there's, um, I actually, when C Matt had their conference, I went to the agritourism. Um, workshop, and it's just having like farm-to-table dinners. Just imploding that, one, there's a farm in Easton, they had. They did a, they, they make pizza, and they had everybody bring their old Christmas trees there and just had a big. Huge bonfire and sold pizza. And then they do, it's all about, the, the struggle for a lot of farms seems to be bored of health. And getting all the correct licenses and permits that they need, um, and making sure.
Because food is, at the end of the day, a big draw.
Yeah, people like. Yeah, um, I I, you know, and a farmer talked about. How they do, they contact the fire department and the police department before they have a big event, because they know they're gonna have a lot of traffic.
Right.
Um, so I guess it's education. But C Matt does that.
Okay.
Um, I had another thought. So what, would you like me to?
Like, to some extent, I would say Arujo's all the various events they pulled, whether it be classes. You know, come, um, learn how to do flower arranging, and then build baskets, and those are examples.
Yes.
Agritourism, you know, so, and they do that periodically throughout the year, so they are engaged in it, so. It would just be, you know.
This actually jumped started a question that I'd like to add to the um, assessors question, yeah. Because the question that I would have would be, I'm thinking about things like um, like a wedding venue. Right, a lot of these areas are gonna have, you know, lots of nice picturesque lands, probably in chapter, um, are they able to? Use a commercial purpose like a wedding venue or a bed and breakfast or something like that, and then still maintain their chapter land, even though they're running a commercial enterprise out of that?
Yes, they can.
They can, oh, excellent.
Yeah, because we do, I, my farm in Rehoboth, we do weddings there.
Okay, excellent. You answered my question, I'll still ask it for the edification of the public.
Yes.
Whoops, my wife is not listening to that.
We have a donkey that will escort you.
Oh, really?
He's in all the wedding pictures.
That's the list, anybody have any, they wanna bring up an addition, or, or go back to, or. We didn't actually rate high, medium, low, I think we just kind of figured out like what we wanna work on and didn't wanna work on. Um, I don't think there's anything here that's, and a lot of this is. Research gearing us up for next year, when and if the planning board's able to kind of really talk about rezoning and. So, you know, that gives us a big time to go for those efforts, so. Kind of work on everything that we said makes sense, um, okay. And we can talk maybe at the next meeting about who's working on what, I mean, we volunteered for a few things, and John volunteered. We just have to keep pushing things. Uh, next thing in my head is to discuss any new business interest in town, this is just a stink. I hadn't talked with the town clerk since last October, so she has not had any new business certificates or renewals, so. So I don't have any item there, I don't have any correspondence, uh, we don't have any public here for public input. Um, I did distribute the meeting minutes for October twenty-third and January twenty-second, if people have an opportunity to review them. So no questions if somebody wants to make a motion to accept those.
Yeah, uh, would you like one motion or two?
One is fine.
Okay, I propose a motion to accept the minutes for October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and January twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four.
Discussion, on favor? Opposed? Um, set the next meeting date, if we stick with the fourth Monday, it will be Monday, March twenty-fifth. That does happen to be the candidate's meeting night hosted by the library, um. Here in town, so that starts at seven o'clock, uh, so that would be probably a shorter meeting, um. You know, that I would actually be attending that, um, so, same, so.
Yeah, I'll be there too.
We can still meet, we just have to plan on being a shorter agenda, so we can all get out of here, you know, in a reasonable time to. To attend that, so.
Short meeting.
So, somebody wanna make a motion for a meeting on January, that's right, March twenty-fifth?
Propose a motion to hold our next meeting on the fourth Monday of March, the twenty-fifth.
Second, right, on favor? Um, anybody have anything else they wanna bring up before we adjourn?
Um, one last thing for new business interests in town, maybe something we can think about doing would be if we have any new businesses that. Do end up opening up, perhaps we could um. Invite them to advertise their grand opening on the town Facebook page. Or the town website, perhaps if we have grand openings, and then maybe any members of DDIC that wanna go, or any local officials that wanna. Just kind of show support for the business community, uh, might be like a nice way of kind of rolling out the carpet and saying, welcome to Dayton.
I like it.
Yeah. Not all of them obviously would would want that, some are. They're plumbing business, but. At their house.
Right.
Parked out there, but they don't technically have a grand opening, but it doesn't mean that it came, made us wanna put the advertisement out there that. They were open for business, and we're new in Dayton, and that sort of thing, so, but yeah, no, I agree, we can start doing that. I have a motion for adjournment.
Go move.
Second. On favor?
Hi.
Close. I think it's adjourned at seven o'clock. Thank you very much.